Really?
No, second.
A little rock today.
I'll take that one when I finish the order.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council for January 21st, 2020. Looks like everyone's here. Invocation and pledge will be led by the city attorney.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to do the business of this city. We thank you for those who protect our country. We thank you for those who protect our city. And we pray that we would be the examples that you want us to be in conduct and in ethics and in all the things that you want us to do this evening, Lord. We pray that you will give us wisdom and we pray that you would watch over all of our community and keep us safe, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next order of business is special guests and announcements and the employee of the month award, which goes to Ms. Rachel Hall. Please join me on the stage.
Rachel.
I moved this out of the way, but I guess I need it. So I'll just read this proclamation. It's a proclamation naming Rachel Hall as the mayor's employee of the month for December 2019 and declaring January 25th, 2020 to be Rachel Hall Day in the city of Maumell. Whereas Rachel Hall started with the city of Maumell in early 2019 as the city's first communication coordinator. And whereas Ms. Hall quickly adapted to this newly created role by developing social media and video campaigns, which greatly improved the level of communications with Maumell residents. Whereas Ms. Hall utilized innovative ways of engaging Maumell residents in promoting community development and city pride within the city. And whereas one of Ms. Hall's innovative approaches to community development included the creation of an annual event called the Very Merry Maumell, which is a voluntary competition among Maumell residents in the month of December, allowing citizens to showcase their merriest holiday light displays in a friendly competition. Now therefore, I, Caleb Norris, Mayor of Maumell, on this 21st day of January, with great honor and privilege to hereby declare Rachel Hall to be the mayor's employee of the month for December 2019, and I hereby proclaim January 25th, 2020 to be Rachel Hall Day in the city of Maumell. Which camera? Oh, look at that. Was that tear inducing? So, thank you and congratulations again, Rachel. I know a lot of folks loved the Very Merry Maumell, including the video leading up to it. And so we hope we can continue that and do even better next year, just to continue to build on what we have. Next up is the approval of minutes for the January 6th regular meeting. Y'all have received a copy of that. Is there any discussion on that matter?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. I haven't received any public comment cards. So we will move on to the financial statement review. Ms. Vega, if you could please come give us a rundown on what's going on.
Good evening. I come before you with egg on my face. After the financials went out and actually about 10 minutes ago, realized that the state grants that we've received from the state this year were misbooked under the general fund instead of the street fund. And so that adjustment needs to be made, and I'd like for y'all to table accepting the financials. There are some highlights that I'd like to go over with you, but the whole presentation is different. One of the things that I thought was really great is that our revenue was up this year, not up as much as I thought. County millage was up 1% and county sales tax was up 4%. Actually, all our sales tax were up 4% across the board. And so that's really exciting. We also thought that franchise fees were dropping, and franchise fees went up 2% this year. State grants that we received in 2019 were right at $400,000 and they go to the street fund. County millage for the street fund was up 3%. And state turnback was up 1% and street aid was up 5% over prior year. Overall, sanitation was flat. I mean, it was very up over last year, but remember, we changed to CAW doing our invoicing. And so I looked at it compared to 2017, and it's up, but it's not significantly up. The general fund expenses for the year are up 9%. And this is predominantly in police and fire due to additional personnel. We also have parks, seniors, and city services that are up, and they're up due to utilities. Utilities went up quite a bit. All departments were under budget for the year. Street expenditures were 21% below budget. This was predominantly due to the unreimbursed design services that were in 2018 that we did not have in 2019 and the personnel that was reallocated between streets and public works. And then sanitation personnel was under 4%, down 5% to prior year for the same reason. And operating expenses were up 6% and this was predominantly due to vehicle maintenance. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Scott?
Of course, we made budget decisions based on the numbers that we had. Are we going to need to relook at any of our budget?
No, no ma'am. No, and the positive thing is, as far as sales tax and stuff, the mayor was concerned that we were going in aggressive on that, and I felt like there was this increase that was happening this year and that just further supports that.
Did it materialize?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
I'm not sure if this is for you, Ms. Vega, or for the mayor, but I'll ask it. Back at the end of December, we did a budget resolution for $360,000 to the new capital improvement fund that we created. Going forward, how will we see that? Will that be a part of the general fund or are we gonna have a separate fund?
It has a se- it's a separate fund. We set up a separate fund for the capital improvements and we set up a separate fund for the police and fire have sent.
So for 2019, should we see that $360,000 from the budget resolution somewhere?
It will be in it. Well, it's effective for 2020, so it will be in the 2020.
So in 2020, we budgeted $490,000?
Correct.
So is that $360 a part of the $490? I thought the $360 was separate since we passed a budget resolution in December.
Yes, it is on top of that. Is your question, Councilmember Gardner, are we gonna show that as an expense to the general fund?
Right, right.
Transfer to the?
Since it's gonna be a separate fund, yeah, that's what I was wondering, how we would see that reconciled going forward?
Well, that would go, so yes, you would see the money coming out of the general fund and going into the capital improvement fund.
There'll be a line item for that?
Yes.
So, yeah, so if we?
So that'll be in the beginning of the year, you'll see that. In January, you'll see that. I can add the capital improvement fund to my reporting. And I can also add the, I also will add the police and fire.
Okay.
Fund.
And I was just wondering on the, because the $360 that we did in 2019, would that not come out of the general fund balance for 2019? Should that, should the general fund be lower? The balance be lower by $360?
Yes, but I thought that was 2020.
So I thought we did?
I didn't realize that we're in 2019 and 2020.
Sort of $360 in 2019 and then the $490 was budgeted for 2020.
That's correct. So it was, well, we had two. One, one would go into affect January 1, effectively, that the amount that's in the budget, the amount that was included in the budget. But then we had a 2019 resolution, basically transferring that money from the general to the capital improvement. So I think the issue is that we would probably expect in the updated financials to see an expenditure in 2019?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Well, that's, no, that's fine.
I understood that to be 2020.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna, I wanna make sure that our general fund balance is truly reflective of the money that we've already shifted out for those capital purchases down the road. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Vapurzain?
Make a motion to table the vote on the December financials until next meeting when the balance is where it needs to be, according to Ms. Vega.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I do have more discussion items for the time being. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you're just gonna give us some revised ones next, next meeting?
I'll send out revised financials tomorrow.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
And then the idea being at the next council meeting, y'all will adopt the December financials.
Great.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to table the financials until the next city council meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Thank you, and again, I apologize.
We will, we don't have a planning commission report, but I'd like to point out, item number eight there nested up there above unfinished business is the place where at the next city council meeting, the planning commission report will precede the agenda items. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I have a motion and second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, Madam City Clerk, if you could please give the second reading ordinance, 991, adopting provisions for sick leave accrual.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Maumell, Plaske County, Arkansas, ordinance number 991, and ordinance of the city council, ordinance of the city of Maumell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the police officer sick leave accruals and for other purposes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, based on what Chief Pickard brought to our attention at the last meeting, which was a legal definition of workday, I looked through, I bet you, 25 internet sites looking for a definition of a workday. And the ones that I found that actually talked about what a workday was, and that means the period between the commencement of the principal activities that an employee is engaged to perform on any given day and the succession of the principal activities for that day. So that was the definition of the workday. All of the ones in the legal documents that I looked at were just a reiteration of what was found under the U.S. Department of Labor, which Captain Pickard had spoken of before. So they took that definition. And even if the state has opinions as to what a workday is, does, is that not superseded by federal law?
Madam City Attorney?
So these are two separate bodies of law. The federal definition is for the Fair Labor Standards Act, which governs minimum wages and overtime compensation and is a federal standard. This is a separate state body of law that governs municipal law enforcement agencies and their accrual of benefits. So sick leave isn't required under the Fair Labor Standards Act. It's just dealing with the overtime and the minimum wage. So if it were a state, trying to think, if it were a state interpretation and the state were looking at overtime and minimum wages for their employees, then the federal law would supersede, but this is a different area of law.
Can I go on?
Yes, please.
It's also my understanding that both the Little Rock and North Little Rock police departments accrue similar to or greater than what the city of Maumell does. And I know that if your friend jumps off a bridge, that doesn't mean you have to jump off a bridge, and three wrongs don't make a right, but why are they not being held to the same scrutiny that our police department is?
So I did receive some similar questions, and I've done a couple of things since our last meeting. One is to speak to another city attorney. And one is to exchange some correspondence with Lanny Richmond, who's with the municipal league on this, these topics, exactly what you're saying. My city attorney colleague mentioned that this came to be a subject of attention because Texar Cana faced a lawsuit on this same subject, I think about two years ago or somewhere, somewhere in that area. I'm not sure what all the details of the outcome of that were, but it became an issue and the municipal league began advising cities that they needed to look at their policies and look at state law and reconcile them to make sure that they were in compliance. She mentioned that she was in agreement with my interpretation, but sometimes things don't get changed because of issues with timing. For instance, if you've just had negotiations with your police department union, that's not the best time to go back and then change your sick leave policies and then have to renegotiate everything that you just got ironed out. I also asked Lanny why, and I specified that I, we were working on an ordinance to try to bring it in compliance with the 90-day, eight-hour day requirements under the statute. And his response was, to me, was, I suspect many cities simply haven't reviewed the statutes and their policy to ensure compliance. More than once, I've seen a city not know of or understand the uniformed officer statutory leave time. So as far, I obviously can't answer for every other city in the state, but it was good to talk to two very knowledgeable attorneys in this area who said they did agree with me. And just in my interpretation of looking at the statute and the attorney general opinions. I also asked Lanny about the issue we talked about as far as credited time, because I know that's very important. And I had mentioned that there was some attorney general opinions that we could possibly use to defend the position that we had already credited this time, so it wasn't a violation of the accrual statute to allow them to keep the credited time. His response was along the lines of what mine was, which is, he said, strictly speaking, there's a question of whether they're entitled to those hours since the statute prevents the accrual over a said amount. The employees could argue that the city chose to grant them an additional benefit in excess of the statute, and they had some contractual claim to those, to that accumulated sick leave. I don't know if that's necessarily a winning argument, but I could see why the city would choose to avoid the problem. So what he basically said was, there's not really a concrete opinion that we're gonna be able to appoint to, but it's at least, you have a good argument to allow them to keep those credited hours. So that's what.
So they're basically grandfathered then, those who have?
Well, and he also pointed to that, that a similar statute dealing with firefighters, when it was enacted, allowed them to keep what they had already accrued. They just didn't accrue additional over that amount. So there's a little bit of, you know, there's a little support for that, and I think we could make a good argument for letting them keep what they've already been credited with. Did that answer your questions or?
Yes, I have another point, but I'll let the other questions be asked and then I'll bring up my last.
Councilmember Vapurzain?
I am much in favor of letting them keep what they have. If we're able to put that in this ordinance. Second thing, do we know of any cities that have gone through what we're going through where they had a large amount of hours, but they came into compliance with what we're attempting to do? Do we know of any other cities that have, and how they've dealt with it? Because I'm certain that that may lend some wisdom to us if we know a city that did that.
Texar Cana.
Texar Cana did that, and they're the, and they're the ones that, did they grandfather in then? Okay, so I'll leave it to Ms., you go ahead, because you got the button next, so.
Oh, do I?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Texar Cana did, and back in, it was March of 2019, so it was just about a year ago, a little less than a year ago. Arkansas Board lets employees keep their sick leave hours. So they did go through that. One thing that I wanted to ask and point out, you know, our neighbors, we've got Little Rock sick leave, North Little Rock, I've looked at all of these, I've done some digging, and Little Rock, theirs is based on an eight-hour workday with a maximum of 1,600 sick leave hours, and North Little Rock is 20 sick leave days with unlimited accumulation, and Jacksonville is 720 hours for an eight-hour shift, but 1,080 for a 12-hour patrol shift. And I think since I've been here, since 2000, it's always been 12-hour patrol shifts, right, Chief? Okay. What I, what my concern is, and I don't know, I understand state law, I know compliance and all of that thing, what I worry about is with these, our neighbors having unlimited accumulation in that 1,600, I worry about losing our, our best to our neighbors when they've got a better benefit. I also worry about police morale if we take anything away from them. I'm all for letting them have what they've already got, but I mean, it doesn't seem in my mind, this, this is like a slippery slope. As you said, it could just start, where does it end? It starts with sick days and vacation days and, and on and on. So I worry about those two issues, and I don't want them to feel like they're being picked on by this council, and I don't want them to feel like that they're, they're losing anything by being a police officer in Maumell, Arkansas. I want it to be a good place for them to come and work because we have, we have benefits for them. That's all.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
I just, I did wanna point out, I think at least one of those cities that is going to be changing in the not-so-distant future, I don't know what the guidelines will be. And of course, I don't know whatever all of our neighbors will do. It sounds like Jacksonville has conformed to something pretty close to what we're talking about. And just to point out, this is one small area of benefits, and this council has broad discretion to change other benefits. I mean, this doesn't preclude us from saying, you know, to compensate for this loss, you know, we can change the vacation accrual schedule, or we can allow a larger number of sick days to be paid out at the time of retirement. I mean, there, there are other options and, you know, the council has the freedom to amend this ordinance. So, you know, if you want to allow, you know, if you, whatever you want to do to amend it, we just need to make, you know, decide those motions that you want to be made and move to, to make those amendments. And I'm happy to talk to anybody about, you know, what you want to do. Of course, along with that, of course, you gotta reconcile it with the budget, which is what the mayor, I'm sure, would appreciate, you know. It's a little bit, we're at, we've already got a budgeted year, so that's something to think about. But I just didn't want it to appear that we, you know, there's, if we do this, there's nothing else that can be done to compensate for it.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, and that was gonna be my last point, is that if, we want to comply with the law. That's, you know, that's basic, we're law people, so we want to comply with the law, but doing something in exchange for that, and I was thinking of the retirement payout, you know, to, we're, I think, paying out the 480 hours, the minimum.
That sounds like.
Yeah, that's right.
480. We could move, you know, more of that to a, to a retirement payout. So, I mean, it's not immediate, but it's something that we could do for them. And I truly don't know how this works, whether it's done through the bargaining unit or whether it's just something that the city can do and pass along. Make changes like, make changes like.
We don't have any contracts with any of the unions.
Okay, so the city can go, can just?
I think maybe even arguably, even if we did have a contract, the city council. Madam City Attorney, I see your lights on.
So as far as the vacation payout, the statute states that if, and here, let's just read it. At the, if at the end of his or her term of service upon retirement or death, whichever occurs first, any police officer has unused accumulated sick leave, he or she shall be paid for this sick leave at the regular rate of pay and effective at the time of retirement. Payment, payment for unused sick leave in the case of a police officer upon retirement or death shall not exceed 60 days' salary, which is what we're at now, unless the city by ordinance authorizes a greater amount, but in no event to exceed 90 days. So I say all that to say, we need an ordinance, so you would need to either amend this or propose a new ordinance if you want to move from the 480 to the 720, and if that reconciles with our budget.
Councilmember Scott?
I personally would rather see a separate ordinance for, for those kinds of changes. But this is my, my opinion.
And then, just so that we're thinking holistically, the issue then becomes that we have a police department that then gets more, gets paid out more of their sick leave than other departments and employees within the city. And so just be aware of that.
Yeah, we probably just need to have more of a discussion about it.
About that separate ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what the body of the separate ordinance would look like?
240 hours if you went with a seven number, which is 20 days if it's a 12-hour, or 30 days if it's a eight-hour.
But the mayor makes a good point that, you know, if we differentiate the group, then we're sort of dissing the other groups in the city, so it's just something.
Or just be aware of.
Need a little thought, anyway.
Councilmember Gardner?
Just to echo what Councilmember Scott said, I, I think we, a separate ordinance would be good to correct that, but about the same token, I don't feel comfortable voting on this one until we have another option possibly hammered out. I just, I don't think it would be fair to, to vote on this and promise that we'll look at the other later when we don't have anything concrete that we're gonna look at. So, you know, I don't want to table it indefinitely, but it would be nice to, to come up with a plan of what we're going to do and then revisit it, because I don't think there's any immediate timeline. I just don't feel comfortable voting on this in two weeks without having a plan in place that we can discuss amongst all the, the parties involved.
Councilmember Vapurzain?
I'll put forth a motion that we table this until we know what we're gonna do, because I was gonna say we could have a third reading, but more than likely, this ordinance is gonna change the way it looks right now, unless we take it the way it is and add an additional ordinance to it. But, so my motion would be to table the third reading of this until we have more evidence of what it is that we're gonna do.
Second.
So, Councilmember Vapurzain, I'd, I'd ask for a date certain or just table indefinitely and pulled off. So what I, what I would like is guidance as to when to put it back on the agenda.
Okay, let's see.
Or to not put it on the agenda.
March 2nd. That gives us?
For the third reading or start over?
To see where we're at, because I don't think it's gonna be a third reading if we're gonna.
I don't want there to be a third reading.
No.
With it this way?
With it this way.
The council is always free to disregard the law.
Yes, yes.
Not necessarily recommend it, but it's been suggested before.
I would like to table the third reading and come up with a new ordinance, or ordinances in play by March 2nd, because we have to be in compliance with the law, but we also have to have offers on the table. And I think six weeks ought to give us enough time to be able, even if we had to have some special meetings where we could discuss what we're going to do, what do you feel about that?
Only thing I would add to that is, whatever date this particular ordinance is brought back up, I would like for whatever else is proposed to also match the same reading number, so that we're not voting at separate times. I don't feel comfortable on this.
Can I make a suggestion? So if you move to amend, let's say you wait, if it went to third reading next week and you move to amend and allow the officers, if you don't want to include that with this, that's fine, the 720 hours. But if you move to amend to allow them to retain their hours that have already been credited, that's a substantial enough change that I think it would go back to first reading. Is that right? So if it goes back to first reading, that gives you time to go ahead and get your other ordinance written on the 720 hours, assuming that's what's the desire to do, and get it rolling at the same time. I mean, it might be two weeks behind, but it would be already going.
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to.
Well, do you want to amend it now, or do you want to wait till next time?
Let's do it next meeting.
So are you moving to withdraw your motion to table?
I'm moving to withdraw.
I think you can withdraw a motion if the second also withdraws their second, without need for a motion to withdraw the motion. It looks like the motion has, and second have both been withdrawn. And then I believe, Councilmember Holt?
Just since we have a number of officers in our presence, would it be appropriate and okay if any of them chose to stand and give us some kind of idea of if they have any ideas of what they think that we would, they would prefer that we do? Would it be okay for us to hear them, since we're talking about their situation? Is that inappropriate?
It's the city council's meeting. The issue that might be a little bit odd is I don't, is you're asking for someone to stand up and represent the police officers as to what sort of amendments that they would like?
Right, if they have some kind, if they'd rather have, if they have any alteration at all where we can get up to that point where it sort of equals out, what are some of the things that they might would have in, since we're talking about them and this is their life, and as we've said, we want them to be, feel like we're doing everything we can to live up to the standards we should. I just thought I'd ask if they would care to stand up and give us any idea? Any thoughts if they had any? They probably talk among themselves, so I wonder if they talk about, tell us.
That might be a job for the upper.
Comes with that.
Oh, he's back.
I'll talk for a second. We've discussed this, and honest, Ms. Williams, we don't think the council's out to punish us or anything, I can assure you that. Most of our officers, I've talked to a lot of them, we've had meetings about it, I will say this, most of them are concerned about going on an eight-hour shift, accrual rate from a 12, because none of us work eight-hour shifts. I get that I'm a captain, exempt, but I don't work an eight-hour shift. I'm there eight, nine, 10 hours a day, which if you look at it over the course of two weeks, it's well over 80 hours in 10 days, so that doesn't equal eight-hour shift. Not one patrol officer works 12-hour shift, or eight-hour shifts, they all work 12s. And our investigators all work, you know, about eight or 10-hour shifts. So no one's working an eight-hour shift. That is a concern of your police officers, because we think that it's going to affect our personal leave accrual down the road and possibly our vacation accrual. As for me, I haven't used a sick day in years, or rarely ever, it's usually when my children are sick. I have 1,200, I'm maxed out. And looking at that, instead of from an hour point of view, we look at it as a dollar point of view. That has monetary value to the officers. For me, it's over $14,000 worth of hours if you reduce me from 1,200 hours to 720. It's over $14,000. That's my time I've earned, and I've been a good employee and come to work, even when I'm sick sometimes. And a lot of officers do, I think we figured at the last meeting, there was like 22 of us that were over the 720 max. I think that speaks for your police department, they come to work unless they're just got the flu or something, or bad sick, or their child's sick. We come to work, and we come to protect our city. I think you should consider that. I think it's fair to let us keep our hours we've earned. I give away about six hours of pay period anyway, because I can't max them out anymore, and we're used to that. The, what Ms. Scott brought up was how, and I like it, a noble officer wouldn't, a lot of departments pay more than that minimum, I think it's 480 when you retire. I think that's a benefit to stay here. I think that's something that should be considered for someone like me. I've been here for 17, working on 18 years, I plan on finishing my career, reward that officer. We've only had, in my time, three or four of us retire at full, that I can think of. That's my, you know, Chief Williams, Mike Wilson, and maybe Stuart will retire, Greg McPhail. So there's not, it's not like you're going to get a lot. I wish we would, maybe that would be a benefit for, to keep them longer instead of going somewhere else or changing career paths, just something to consider. Obviously, we would love to meet with you all if you could, or, you know, I've talked to John or Mr. Vapurzain about that, you know, maybe come to an FOP meeting. I understand we'd have to do some notification stuff, but officer would love to meet with you before you all vote on anything. Most of these are mostly my opinions, but a lot of the officers, I think, would probably agree with them. We'd like to keep what we got and keep, or consider working a 12-hour shift is what we work for the most part, so. No one's working eights, I can assure you that, so. Any questions? I think I hit on all the notes.
Councilmember Tierney, I see your light is on, is that, do you have a question for Captain Ivy? Okay. Were there any questions for Captain Ivy? Fun to say, Captain Ivy?
Yeah.
Thank you, user. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I'd like to revisit what the city attorney was talking about as far as if we were to do a resolution to grandfather in the hours that they already have. That would be like a rewrite of this resolution. What would be involved to get something like that going?
So if you're going to amend the ordinance to include the grandfathering, to allow those hours that have already been credited to remain, and just not the additional hours accrue above the limit, it would just, you need to kind of work out whoever, whomever is going to sponsor that. Would need to kind of work out the language that you want with me, so that we have something that can be proposed, and it just needs to be read into the record, how it would be amended. And then it would go, that would be the first reading, and we'll go back to first reading, and then we'd have two more.
Basically, we're looking at two things here. One is helping them retain what they've already earned, we don't want to take anything away. And then two, try to come up with something to maybe replace what they'll be losing by no longer having that in the future.
And as far as the 720 hours at retirement, and again, I'm not trying to take a position one way or another, but if that is what you want to do, that can be included as an amendment in this ordinance. I mean, if we want to do it all at the same time, there's no reason why it can't be a proposed amendment as well.
Thank you.
And so, I think Councilmember Vapurzain was starting to make a motion, or maybe made a motion to amend the ordinance to allow for the retention of the excess hours. Did you make that motion, or?
Yeah, we drew.
Wait, no, you withdrew a different motion.
There's been a lot of motions made this evening.
So I think we can amend the current ordinance by motion.
But I think we also have to deal with the hours, the workday, so.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah. I, I'm going to say what I'm going to support is whatever, I think that the mayor and the city attorney think is fair and reasonable for this whole situation. I think you all have done a lot of research. I don't have the ability to get down in the weeds like you all, and I think some other folks here are more into that sort of thing. So I'm going to support whatever you all come up with, whether it's the current ordinance or something that you feel like you want to revise from this point. So that's where I am, I'm going to support whatever you all come up with.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
Where did we leave as far as when this would come back? Did we ever get to that, or are we still on second reading?
We're still on second reading, and then I thought there was going to be a motion to amend that would materially change it and set it back for first reading at the next meeting.
I was just going to say, I think we've talked about a number of different things here, and we don't have a clear picture of where this ordinance as it stands is going. And there's a number of variables that maybe worked into that, so I'm not sure if this would further complicate the issue, but we had talked about possibly having a catastrophic leave pool, and, I'm not saying that right, a pool that people could donate their days to. Is that something that we could also look at doing? Does that need to be wrapped into this and possibly help the situation?
Plan has been, we've been redoing the personnel manual, I think it's gone through several different drafts, has had the city attorney's comments, then it's supposed to come to me, then to department heads, before presenting it to the council for adoption.
On the, so with the new act on the catastrophic leave pool, I mean, it's sort of authorizing something that cities have been doing anyway, but it does have some guidance in there about passing, you know, an ordinance and setting it up as a program. I think if we are going to successfully implement that, we probably do want to make some changes. That's going to be a fairly complicated ordinance that I, if I had my preference, I would rather this, if the issue of sick leave be addressed separately as opposed to trying to combine all that. I think you're going to run into, just, it's going to, it's going to be a lot if you try to combine those two. To me, it makes sense if you're going to do something with the retirement amount, that's the same statute that governs this accrual issue, so it makes sense to put that together if that's what you decide to do. The sick leave is a whole different statutory area, and I think it would be better to separate those two.
Councilmember Vapurzain?
City Attorney, just ask you a quick question from a legal standpoint. Knowing that none of our officers work eight hours, if we were to say you only get eight hours, even though you work 12, from a legal standpoint, they would have quite a leg to stand on. Would you agree on that?
Well, there are a number of, and I can, I included one of them in your packet, one attorney general opinion on that. There are a couple of others that I have with me, going back to 1995, but then all the way through the more recent one that I included in the packet. And so the attorney general and their interpretations have looked at various things with police and fire over the years, and they do look at, yes, they work a different schedule, but they also don't work the same number of days as people who work eight-hour days. So in a typical work week, if you're working 12-hour days, I believe the police work seven? Is that correct? So if you look at the amount of time, it's still, they use that eight-hour day to say, it kind of equates over the long run with other full-time positions, because you're still working, you're still working basically the same number of hours in a pay period. And that is, you know, again, that's, it's the attorney general opinions. There have been bills introduced to change that. I think there was one in 2011 that wanted to talk, you know, it discussed the 12-hour workday issue. There was an effort to clarify that and make it, you know, the 12-hour days as opposed to the longstanding attorney general rule of eight-hour days. It died in committee. So, I mean, there's also that kind of, that's, you know, some irrational basis for saying that the statute, you know, the legislature looked at that issue, and they didn't adopt 12-hour days. They knew that the AG had taken the opinion that working days or days, if not otherwise defined, are eight-hour days. They had the opportunity to change that to 12-hour days, they chose not to.
Have that issue, then we have the hour issue, and then what to do with the extras. And the pool, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking if there was going to be a pool, it's all volunteer. Nobody has to be, have their arm twisted to put their extra hours in it. That could be volunteer, because those are hours that they've earned, and maybe they want to hang on to them versus being told, well, the only way you're going to get them is if we put them in this pool. Does that make sense? Because if somebody tells me, well, you have to put your extra hours in a pool as opposed to being rewarded for them after you've earned them, you know, if somebody came to me and said, hey, listen, we're going to change things up, a dollar of every hour that you work is going to go into a pool. That removes a lot of incentive for me, so just.
I believe that is voluntary. I've never seen it not be voluntary, and I don't think the statute even allows it to be involuntary.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could move this along, one option, maybe that we amend this motion or this ordinance to include a provision stating that all hours in excess are retained by that individual, and accrual just doesn't continue until they get below, that would, I believe, set this back to first reading at the next council meeting. We could also then have, at the next council meeting, a ordinance to present to the city council on increasing the number of hours awarded at retirement from 480 to 720. They'd both be on first reading at the next council meeting.
Is two weeks an appropriate length of time for that to get worked out and make sure all parties involved are happy with the solution?
It's, I believe, plenty of time to draft the ordinance. But you.
Just.
An ordinance like this isn't typically passed around to everyone to see if they're happy with it. It's a little bit more in the scope of what the council's doing here. And ultimately, a lot of times, especially over something that was perceived as coming against the police and have a real knot in my stomach, adds this tough decision. This has actually been fairly easy for me as with regards to the limits, because I think the law is pretty clear as to what the city is allowed to do. The state law doesn't often put a minimum and a maximum, and so oftentimes, the city, the state law may put a minimum, and then we can exceed that. This is one of those very rare laws that puts the minimum and maximum in certain ways, defines certain terms, certain ways, doesn't leave a whole lot of leeway. It's not politically fun, but I think as the council's discussed, there might be some ways to make it a little more palatable. But to answer your question, I think two weeks is, I won't be drafting, but I found the city attorney quite efficient, and I would believe that that.
I knew that, I knew that was plenty of time for.
Give me about 15 minutes, I might have it ready now.
Yeah, no, I guess my, my main question was, if we look at increasing the 480 and looking at some different options, obviously that brings a budgetary component into it, and just, of course, it's going to be on first reading, so we'll have a whole month to talk about it.
And again, I think the, I think there's been four retirements in recent memory, right? Those sort of things can get eaten up a little bit with police and fire, meaning there's always an officer who left, and you've got that vacancy. We had two retirements last year, you may know, and we didn't need to come and ask for additional money, so. I don't know that we have a whole plethora of retirement-eligible people for 2020 that would bust the budget, and if they did, we could always come back, like we did with code enforcement, when Mr. Morley retired, we came in and asked for that budget amendment. Councilmember Tierney?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to grandfather in all the accrued hours as they currently are. Basically what you were saying earlier.
We have a motion to amend ordinance 991 to include a provision allowing anyone who's accrued above the maximum to keep that amount.
Correct.
Until they've used that. Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion fails for lack of a second.
I'm confused, because I didn't.
Well, I'm confused, because I didn't know if that was all we were going to amend to.
Well, it's up to the council. My recommendation was make that motion to amend that provision and then write another ordinance, or it could be included, but it might be simpler for the sick to be changed from 480 to 20. Councilmember Gardner expressed that he wanted that in a separate ordinance earlier, I believe.
Well, just, no, I just want them to be done at the same time. That's my...
They can both be done in the same ordinance, and I think that was what the city attorney recommended, or said was an option.
Yeah, I can't see anything against doing that as long as we don't, you know, amend this time and then come back next time and think, oh, we forgot to do this or that. Are we comfortable as a body that that was all that we were going to amend in this particular ordinance? I just wasn't sure of that, Michael.
So the two options then being discussed are retaining the excess hours and changing the, well, changing the retirement from 480 to 720.
That's right, there were two things we were looking at.
Madam City Attorney?
I was just going to point out that you can do it, you know, you can do it as two separate amendments, or you can, you know, you could consider this one, and it goes to first reading, and then if you decide to do it as another amendment to this ordinance and you do it next time, it would go to first reading again. Or you can wait and kind of take some time to look at it and make sure the language is how we want it, and do both of them at the same time next week. You have options.
So if it comes back next week, these two, they will both be on first reading? Is that what you're saying? Next time?
Assuming you made those motions to amend next week, if you made two separate motions to amend for each of those two issues, then it would be on first reading, assuming both passed, it would be on first reading next week with the amendments, and then it would be heard two more times.
Okay. Does that sound right?
Councilmember Mosley?
All right, I've got a question. Mr. Mayor, do you like this ordinance as it is currently written?
It's a horribly worded question, because I don't, I don't like it. I don't think we're necessarily solving a problem by reducing it. I think it's the, it's what the law appears to set as the maximum, and so it's the ordinance that I think sufficiently addresses the concerns in the law.
So you still support this ordinance?
I would, I would support everything, everything we've talked about. I see no problem allowing the officers to keep their sick leave there, and just they don't accrue until it drops below a number that doesn't really affect anything. The folks I'm least concerned about abusing sick time are those that have accumulated a lot of sick time. So these are not the folks that are just burning, you know, just calling in every chance they get. With regards to upping from the retirement from 480 to 720, I think that question, I like the idea, but I think it also, there will be necessary, there will be additional ordinances, right? I assume where other departments start coming and asking for the same sort of treatment. And I don't know that that's a bad idea either. We can't always compete with some places as terms of salary, but where we try and beat them is in the workplace environment, some of the more intangible things. I think that someone who's spent a career with the Maumell Police Department, we're talking about an extra 20 days off at retirement. Good for them for making it, and thank you for staying here. So I don't have a problem with that, then just think of what follows after that.
Okay, so you would support going back and rewriting this thing and doing that? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Among other possible...
Because, like I said, I cannot get down on the weeds on this. I'm not familiar with this type of thing. I've never dealt with sick leave in my life, so...
You guys will have fun when we give you all the personnel manual, but yeah. Next up was Councilmember Saunders.
It's already been answered.
Oh, your lights out, too. Councilmember Vapurzam?
So what they have right now, the maximum for our police officers is 1,200? Is that...
That sounds about right.
Okay. Is that, that's what you're maxed out now for sick leave is 1,200? And the new law statute says that they have to bring that down to 7...
720.
720, okay. So if they keep what they have, any sick time that they take from now until retirement would eat away at that number, correct?
Yes.
Okay, until it got down below 7...
So those maxed out are already not accruing, right? It's not growing above 1,200. I was just going to say, you're not going to earn any more sick time until that number gets down to 7...
So if Captain Ivy gets sick and he has to take off a month, it's going to eat from the 1,200 down closer to the 720 mark, right? But that's never going to go back up to the 1,200?
Correct, the, yes.
Okay. New officers, they come in under this, the only people who are going to benefit from the 1,200 is those who are over that right now, correct?
I believe that's correct.
But so, I'm just, I just want to make it as simple as possible. I don't want to muddy the waters, and if they are, I want, again, I want to, I want to have integrity in what I think that I'm doing, and I want them to feel that we have their back as they have our back. This is not a law that is making it easy for us to do that. We're trying to do everything we can to let them know, hey, listen, we're not going to bum rush through this thing. So I just, I just wanted to get those things out, and that was, that was what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I think that we kind of have discussed the two amendments to the ordinance, but rather than make a motion to make the amendment tonight, I'd like for us to mull it over, think about it, make sure that there isn't something else, maybe even have discussions with some of the officers, make sure that there isn't something else that needs to be amended in this ordinance to make it fair, legal, palatable, and so that we wait until the next reading to make those amendments, which will take it back to first reading, and it'll give us an additional month after that to be looking at the catastrophic leave bank and some other things that might benefit the employees as well. So, I mean, that's just, that's just my thinking. Just gives us a little more chance to kind of just think about it, and try to be fair.
I like that. Councilmember Gardner?
We're talking about making amendments to this, and I was just going to ask the city attorney if it would be cleaner if we tabled ordinance 991 indefinitely and wrote a new ordinance 992 that had the language that we felt comfortable with. Would that be, is that a cleaner option, or...
I think it's fine to amend it, amend the ordinance that you have. I don't think, I don't see the two amendments that you're talking about being all that complicated, really. I mean, you're adding two more paragraphs to a code section that already exists.
From a timing perspective, it wouldn't change anything. If we make the amendments, it's going to bring it back to first reading anyway, so...
If I can make a recommendation, I'd recommend just amending this ordinance. Sometimes we do research to try and find old ordinances in their original form before it's got amended, and you're trying to trace it back. Having two ordinances on the same subject in close timeframe could possibly lead to confusion where we grab the wrong one and base it on that, if that makes sense.
So when we come back in two weeks, we will need to make an amendment to this?
Yeah.
Right, if we're comfortable with it then, or table it at that point, but yeah, so, okay. I was just trying to think, because even if we make amendments to it, that's not going to show up on the packet until, well, we'll have to make those amendments in the meeting. And so...
Somebody needs, somebody needs to sponsor whatever amendment is going to be made to be able, and I don't know, the mayor can sponsor, I guess, if he, you know, what, I just need to be able to put what I think you're asking for down and get someone to be okay with it, to make the actual motion to amend to be in that language. If, I mean, and you're free to write what you want yourself if you want to do that, but I'm assuming that you might want my assistance, and if you don't, that's okay, too.
No, no, no.
I want you to do it.
I want you to do it.
Yeah, all of us quit Canada.
So I see no further lights on. Is there any further discussion on ordinance 991 at this time? Seeing one, Councilmember Saunders.
Boy, barely beat that one, didn't I? I would prefer to let the mayor handle this. He's also an attorney, and he knows what we want, so instead of me or somebody else sponsoring it, I would prefer that the mayor do it.
I have no problem doing that. Procedurally, though, we have an ordinance that's been presented and read twice. Absent some sort of motion from the council, I don't feel comfortable just unilaterally changing the ordinance on my own. I mean, I get, I think we're all on the same page.
There would still need to be a motion from someone who moves to amend it in that way. So even if Caleb worked on the language with me of how we were going to amend it, someone of you at that, will have to make the actual motion to amend, right?
I bet we can, here we go, here we go. I've got it. Why don't we, why don't we write up a motion?
I was going to say draft a...
A proposed motion for someone on the council to make at the next meeting.
And then one of us would be happy to do that.
And by we, did we mean you, Madam City Attorney?
I assumed so.
The royal we.
So with that, is there any further discussion on ordinance 991? No action taken. It'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting.
And just so I'm clear, the proposed amendment will include both the crediting of hours that have already been credited, the grandfathering, and the 720-hour allowance at death or retirement. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to new business, there is none, so we'll move on to mayor's comments. We're going to need a pretty strong push to get some folks for the tree board. We've had a couple resignations and anticipated resignations, so if you know anyone who may be interested in that, and maybe we could push that, and I can get with Rachel, and we can get that posted and get a good push on that. I have stood up the, and I intended, no, I didn't intend, because I didn't have the list of names, stood up the elected official salary committee as required by the ordinances. In January of every even-numbered year, the committee has been stood up. I don't have the list of folks on here. I thought it would be fun to ask the two rookie council members to be the city's representatives, thanks to those who have done it before. Let them suffer through it, no. And so I'll get you a list of those names, and I believe they will be working with the new, as I'm saying this, I'm wondering what I said at the last meeting, the new human resource manager, which brings me to the point, I'm not sure if at the last council meeting I pointed out that we had received a resignation from our current human resource director. Thursday will be his last day. He's accepted a job out of state with a bigger city, so congratulations to him, and we had, he gave a good month-long notice, so we have had the chance to interview and have selected someone who will be introduced to y'all at the next city council meeting. She starts Monday. Oh, good. That's it for mayor's comments, as far as I can think. Other than to point out, there's a couple proclamations in the council packet, both of which are pretty important, but I'll let you take a look at those. Any city council member comments? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. I understand, I didn't realize at the time because I had missed a budget meeting, but I understand the, we had, at one time, there was $10,000 in the budget for planting of new trees around Maumell, and I understand that got cut from the budget at some point in the process.
Yes, sir, it was under the city beautification was what the line would have read in the earlier version.
Right, did that have anything to do with the resignations on the tree board?
I have, well, I was aware, so we've had a vacancy for a while. We had someone else who resigned effective in December, and that decision was made prior to this, and the current chair, I believe, is moving, and I have no reason to believe they're moving because of that. And I can go ahead and, I got an email from Ms. Nash that I can, it's sort of like the annual report, and I was thinking of seeing if she was willing to come in and present it, or someone was, or at the very least, just including that in the council packet for the next go-around, but I didn't get it, or wasn't aware of it, I'm not sure which, prior to the council packet going out.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional council member comments? Madam City Attorney?
I actually do have a little update tonight, just to kind of bring you up to speed on the status of the Crystal Hill project negotiations. I think we mentioned the last time we discussed it, there were three properties that were at issue. We've had one successful negotiation, that one's rolling, well underway. We have one that is very close. They're, they're asking for some minor revisions to the contract, which are, I've made and are now with the mayor, as of today.
I'm reading the email right now, I knew I hadn't seen it.
And then we have the third one, that a lawsuit has been filed, that was filed about a week, week and a half ago, right at the same time I heard from their attorney, who's also a son, and he indicated he was going to work with us and waive service, but that's been almost two weeks, and I've left three or four voicemails and haven't heard back. So I'm getting ready to go ahead and get that served. That's where we are.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam City Clerk, treasure?
Quickly, I'd just like to congratulate Councilmember Gardner for his win as the ambassador of the year. Thought that was well deserved, and that's it.
And best auto insurance agent.
Best auto.
Forget that, yeah. I don't do auto insurance.
That's why you're the best.
I'm the best.
At this point, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Welcome.
We have a motion, I get all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't care if...
Well, the, are you talking about the African's motion, they both withdrew.
So we pick for the Super Bowl, buddy.
I believe that I...
And in fact, they made a motion, withdraw the motion.
I never have license for it.
I could be, that has been our practice, and I think...
Withdraw the motion, withdraw the second.